What?
What's the mic?
That's what I get it. Before we start, does anybody have a question written out that they don't feel comfortable asking themselves and you want us to ask? We'll just use the ones there in the audience. All right. So the way it's going... Okay? So the way it's gonna work is we're going to start with... Yes? Did you introduce yourself?
Yeah.
I'm going to do that. Oh, okay. So I'm Michael Murray. I'm the chairman of the Ward One Democratic City Committee. The Ward Committee is on the presidential ballot during the presidential primary and in Ward One, we elect thirty-five members, some of which are here. Quite information. And we basically represent the people of the Ward at the convention, well, not the convention, but the caucuses. If they get elected to the convention, then they go to the convention. Other Democratic meetings to work on the charters for the state convention, uh, state committee and everything else. So they're basically representing the people of Ward One. All right? So when we decided to do this, it didn't look like anybody was holding candidate sites. But since then, everybody's jumped aboard and it's quite a few of them now. So these guys are gonna be tired. But this one's gotta be unique because we only have the two candidates for Ward One, so we get plenty of time with our representative from our Ward to hopefully get to know him, get to answer our questions so we can know what to expect from him. And basically tell him what we want. All right?
Question?
Hmm? Yes?
So since you're from the Democratic Council, do we assume that both of the candidates are Democrats?
No, this is a nonpartisan election.
It's a nonpartisan election, but you can assume that they are because they are.
Wouldn't that be my first question?
It wouldn't matter if we were sold that the candidates don't matter what party they were. We're here to find out who's gonna represent us, not particularly what party they belong to. All right? So with that, Dave McCarty and Joe Murphy are our candidates. One of these two are going to be our Ward One councillor, one of the city council. So we're gonna... I talked to both of them. We're not... They've been around and you've heard this beginning spiel. So we're gonna wave that and go right into the questions. And we flipped the coin and Dave's gonna get the first question. So you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. I'll give five.
Do you need the mic?
Probably not. Many in our Ward are seniors and many others don't have or use electronic devices. They don't use Facebook or Twitter or emails and have a hard time with flyers and letters left on their door handles. Explain how you think you will reach these people when the need arises.
I don't know if I need this loud. Is this loud? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's funny I got that first question because I'm not really a Facebook guy either. I started this year. I ran two years ago and didn't use Facebook. And everyone in my campaign yelled at me because I didn't like Facebook. But I'm a guy who likes to talk face-to-face, likes to have community meetings more than once a quarter, whatever I need to do. If it has to do with seniors in Ward One, I'll do whatever I need to do to talk with folks. Mailings, I know a lot of folks, the older folks, will, you know, like a letter, a personal letter for me on getting together to talk about issues. And I know they don't get onto Twitter and Facebook and things like that. So that's the way I would handle it. There'd be a lot of mailings out and making sure that they're included, make sure that I'm down here. And one of the biggest, I think, assets that I have is that I'd rather come and ring your doorbell and talk to you or talk to you on this forum than go on email or any of the social media. And I know it's necessary. I know it is somewhat necessary because people get on that and they do look for that, that sort of communication. But I would try to get down here and be in the Ward as much as possible. One of the things too is to zero in on the seniors, you know, particularly who they are, where they are, where they live, to zero in with a mailing and get to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One, two.
Thanks. I would like to start by saying that I've enjoyed how councillor Levaris has communicated via online with us. But the onus is on your representative to find the way to talk to you that works best for you. So what I promised in my campaign is I'm going to continue her traditional online communication. But I'm also willing to have weekly coffee hours or, you know, I call them office hours where I will bounce around the Ward in various locations and I will just set up shop with my paperwork and anyone can come talk to me face-to-face because a lot of people prefer that. I would also continue, I was saying last week at the QCAN thing, we shouldn't just canvass and walk around our neighborhoods to get your vote. We should canvass and walk around our neighborhoods to serve you. So that's not something that I'm gonna stop doing if elected. I wanna be out and about and be a visual presence in the community so I can reach everybody from young to old. Thanks.
All right. Second question, we're gonna Joe first. Oh, does anybody in the audience have a question?
I do, but I don't mind waiting.
John, turn it up.
Okay. Dave, on your flyer, you said that you would stop overdevelopment in Ward One. And I would ask you both how you feel about it. What would you describe as overdevelopment?
Well, Joe, go first.
Go ahead.
Well, what I would describe as overdevelopment is projects that insult the integrity of settled neighborhoods. So if you have a street with single-family neighborhoods, maybe a dual-family here and there, it doesn't make sense to me to tear down a couple houses and put up an apartment complex. Our streets aren't big enough for it. We can't handle the traffic. And it doesn't go with the integrity of the neighborhood. Ward One's been pretty lucky. We've been pushing back against a lot of that, but we gotta stay vigilant on it. So when I say protect against overdevelopment, I'm not against development per se, I'm for smart development. There are certain parts of our city where we can put those types of projects. Basically, they need to go near public transportation so people don't need to have a car to live, you know, in that community. A lot of these buildings moving up now, we should consider having less parking if they're near a T station so that we can get people riding the T and using ride sharing and stuff like that. But if you're gonna have an apartment complex go up away from those T stations, there needs to be adequate parking, there needs to be adequate street space for emergency vehicles, there needs to be shadow plans to make sure that we're not blocking people's gardens and stuff like that. I've been attending a lot of zoning board meetings the past year and these are the things that come up every week. And as your city councillor, I would be at all of them, making sure that our neighborhood is protected.
I'm gonna echo Joe's words a little bit. Being at the zoning board meetings over the past year or so, it seems like the variance is to let things happen. Eight out of ten, nine out of ten sometimes. And I know there's two pieces of property tonight on the zoning board agenda on Spring Street. And if we all know Spring Street, pretty congested. One's on fifty-four, which I think is down at the very end. They're trying to put in a large house that's not gonna fit the lot. And the other one's right next to Betty Bythrow's house at one-twenty. There's an empty lot there. And both places, you know, ten years ago when we had a condo go up or we saw townhouses go up, maybe even longer than that, we thought it was beautiful and this is nice, they cleaned up the area. And now you're saying to yourself, it's got out of hand, at least I am. There was another project at three-oh-eight C Street on the corner of Wampertuck and C, right after you go through the lights at Broad Meadows. And that again, they went to try to put in a multifamily dwelling in there and it just won't work. So we're gonna keep an eye on it, as Joe said, and make sure we don't ruin the neighborhoods.
All right, so... One, two. Yes, Dave. Dave?
Dave, over the years, questions on ethics in the city council came up. They refer to the state and sometime in the future, many times after a term is over, the state responds. People would like to question the ethics of the seat of accounts and their oversights of the monies. Many times, these questions don't get asked because of the need to go to the state, most times never get fully vetted. It is a challenge for a voter to reach outside our community. These roadblocks keep our voters and citizens from having the best government and can reduce the voter turnout. Would you be in favor of... There's actually two questions here. Would you be in favor of creating a city ordinance that addresses ethical issues that prohibit holding a city-funded job? Would you be in favor of an ethics committee to address ethics questions?
Ethics is a... In fact, in my line of work at General Dynamics, I am the director of security for General Dynamics. And the ethics department has grown over the years, the private sector. So I would be in favor of any ethics violations or any ethics oversight hearings to happen immediately if there is a sense or we get something from the public or something out of a meeting that there is a violation going on. Probably address it immediately and don't push it off. In regards to getting, you know, being addressed after the person has moved on, after the incident has moved on, unless we grab it right away and do something with it immediately to bring it up to oversight and talk about any type of ethics, we're gonna run into that all the time. And sometimes time isn't on our side if we can't come up with a decision. But I would be in favor of making sure we had a strong ethics program and an ethics presence on the council.
The first question on that was, would you be in favor of creating a city ordinance that addresses ethical issues that prohibit holding a city-funded job?
Yes. Yes, I would. You know, there's different jobs that happen in the city over the years. Folks that I was with on the school committee that had jobs in the city, you know, and you weren't sure whether it was right or wrong back then, as being a newbie to the school committee when I first came on, it seemed like it just kept going on and on and on until the person had moved on. So there were questions back then, but I would be in favor of that, John.
I would be in favor of that ordinance. And I would be in favor of stricter oversight in real time for ethical violations. If you are serving the city taxpayers, you can't be... You have to be free of conflict of interest. And there have been times over the years where that's not been the case. I don't think people are bad by nature, but I think when you have... When you set the stage for... When you make it difficult for people to make decisions that don't benefit themselves, you need to be able to benefit just the people you're serving. And the easiest way to do that is to, in real time, stop these issues at the start. And that way, we won't have to go back years later and revisit the issues after people are already out of office.
All right, so I can do that. What?
Yes. I would like to bring up the issue of fair housing. I wanted to cite an example fresh in mind. I have a friend who lives in the apartments directly across from the Dunkin' Donuts. She makes forty-seven thousand dollars a year working at a downtown hospital. She has type-one diabetes and she's sixty-two years old. And I recently started to do a little preliminary search for ours. And of course, this is a national problem. I'm not suggesting that it's a Quincy problem. But the Quincy officials seem to have only recently acknowledged even the word fair housing. And I wonder what your opinion is on that? Because this woman, she takes four hundred dollars a week home and her rent is only twelve dollars that she has to buy gas, keep power on the road, work back and forth, shopping, I don't know how she did it, medical supplies. So those of us that are owners should, even though there are property tax increases, should be feeling blessed that we have less our costs. So just a general position.
Well, this might come as no surprise to the people that know me best here, but I always think we can do more for people. And I would definitely think we can do more on a local level, state level, federal level to help people who are struggling like that. Truth is, I think as a nation, sometime we've kinda gotten away from worrying about our fellow man a little bit. You know, we always assume people are out to scam us or, you know, use our tax dollars and, you know, they're working the system. But I would much rather help the vast majority of people who need it and who are doing things the right way and are trying to make their way and not worry about the few that are trying to take advantage of the system. That's how I see these things. So I would support anything we could do locally, even if it's using local funds, to help especially seniors, people with disabilities, people who are struggling like that. And I wouldn't think twice about it. It would be a very easy decision for me.
Joe, just a quick question for you. You said you were out searching for a remedy in regards to relocating.
I was looking into it, struggling people in different housing agencies.
Yeah, no, I mean, that'd be the first thing where, you know, Quincy's Housing Authority and Affordable Housing in Quincy with Jim Marathas, who's the new director of housing down there. The first thing I'd do with you or do with anybody would be try to go over and see if we could situate her or him or whoever we were talking about in regards to another location to help them out money-wise, to help them out location-wise, also to get around a little bit better. There's a number of places in the city that I'd be more than willing to sit with you and talk about.
Here's an interesting side to note, that she applied for the moorings, which is lower-income subsidy back of the Dunkin' Donuts on the beach. And she was rejected because her income exceeded forty-one thousand dollars. So it was a flat-out rejection according to federal standards. It's hard to believe that she could be making forty-seven thousand dollars a year and be considered the working poor. So that's...
Right. I know that happens in the moorings. I know there's a formula over there. I wasn't sure on how much you have to get to be qualified in there, but there's other options that I could help you with, Joe, and be more than willing to do so.
Actually, we had some of the candidates from other races drop by. And we got a few who were still here. Mike Sutter was here earlier. He's running for school committee. David Jacobs is here now. On the council at large, Anne Mahoney was just here, two seconds. Oh, caught her in the waiting room. Dan Ramondi hooked his head in. I know there's quite a few things going on tonight, so... And Noel DeWitt is here. There's Dan. Anya.
Thanks for the call.
Good and strong?
No, it's great.
All right. So that last one came from the audience. Do we wanna do one of those?
We have many traffic problems in Ward One. Many are because our Ward is part of the route to Boston. Many because of our own needs. C Street around Moffett Road, every weekday morning, the middle school with parents wishing to turn left to drop off their children and a busy morning car to run at Dunkin' Donuts causes the right-hand lane to be blocked or jammed. Sometimes a backup for the drive-up window blocks both lanes. What do you think can be done for those one or two hours around commuting and school hours?
Dunkin' Donuts was my favorite spot on Saturday mornings. I'm curious about it, with this whole thing. So was Ginger Bettys. I think I'm broken in on C Street pretty well, you know? I watched that Dunkin' Donuts in action and I don't know how anybody can get in and out of there anyhow, just, you know, picking up their orders the way they operate. Paul Leary's a good friend of mine who runs it, but I'd like to have a conversation first with him too about some ideas. I know that, you know, he has people picking up orders left and right there all over the parking lot. And I think at the beginning when he started that Dunkin' Donuts, that outside lane that looks like it's a drive-up but isn't anything, I'd like to talk to him about possibly turning that maybe into a pickup spot for those orders, people just coming in and getting in line and picking up and going. And I know they have, you know, he'll probably look at me, you know, like I got six heads, but that was a spectacle that went on down there. One of the concerns that I saw also, and I'm gonna take a page out of the Don Custer show, is the bus stop that got moved too, you know? I mean, I don't like the idea and I know why it got moved. There was a lot of congestion, a lot of people on the porches there of the folks' houses. But when that comes, we have the two-sixteen, the two-fourteen, they pull up and whatever in the morning and kids are coming back, you're just waiting for someone to come around the corner by the hot brown plow and everybody, you know? It's a tough scene. Further up too, Ginger Bettys, we have to do something. I know the intersection is on the agenda. It's been on the agenda forever, but we gotta cut that right lane open so they can go up the beach somehow on that no-man's piece of land that either the state owns or the guy owns or the city owns. And then also look, Paul, as you mentioned, the busy hours. It gets busy in... At school time, summer wasn't bad, but at seven o'clock in the morning to eight during school, that's when you need a detail to pull the traffic through the light. And you might need a detail up at the police station, but I'll look into that all the way up. I learned it pretty well this summer.
Well, I'm a twice-a-day visitor to that Dunkin' Donuts and I also can tell you that it's... I'm lucky to be here because it's been... What I would say is, I know the city's contemplating a traffic study that I think I read somewhere. It's a few million dollars. I don't think we need a traffic study to tell us which intersections are busy. And so I would rather take some of that money, as Dave said, put it towards officer details, put it towards smart traffic lights. I would also wanna do some infrastructure projects on the roads to make them more easily traversable by bike and walker. Because if we can get more people out and about, out of their cars, it'll help with congestion in those areas. But I say skip the study and go to real-time improvements.
Go ahead.
I have two unrelated questions. First off, there's this proposed marina maritime thing down at the... At the Ockelove or in that area down there, the marina, that's being proposed, Bill, and I'm wondering if it's necessary and why are we spending money on that? And secondly, more directly towards where I live, there is in-house that from Winthrop and Rockland on C Street to the Willows, we have a drag strip. And I'd like to know what we can do about getting police enforcement there to keep these kids with their motorcycles and their hot rods from zooming... Sometimes they wanna get killed in that section of the street because they just have no idea as to what they're doing down there. They treat it... They use that as a starting gate. You know? I mean, I live two houses down there, so I know. I mean, I'm out there working on my front lawn. It's crazy, you know? I need, you know, I think the city could make a lot of money if they had a policeman stationed at Malvern or Newton just to catch these folks from, you know, from... But we gotta have it enforced because they're speedy. It's not just thirty-five miles an hour or five hundred. We're talking fifty, sixty miles an hour down that street. Well, anyway, and the marina, I'm curious about that.
Okay.
Why are we doing this?
Right. So you answered... Asked two questions, so I'm gonna answer the second one real quickly. You answered it yourself. We need increased enforcement and we needed it yesterday. And it's gotta be regular and it's gotta be strict. And the message will get out, if you speed on C Street, you're gonna get pulled over. And that's not happening enough down, I agree with that. As to what you mean, the marina, it looks beautiful, the artist rendition, I... It just seems like a wonderful thing, but as I've said throughout my campaign, I think it's a vanity project. I don't think we need marina that size. I don't think we need to become a regional facility. I don't think we need a huge new structure where we buy up properties. I think we can fix the boat ramp so it's traversable at any tide level. I think we can fix the public launch, public landing rather. And I think we could do those things and maybe take some money to fix up the maritime center that's there now. That's what I wanna do. Only because we have roads and sidewalks and water mains and sinkholes and there's things that need to be done first. And as I said in one of my previous speeches, to me, it's like putting in a man cave when you need a new roof. Okay? So that's what I want to focus on is let's get the bones of the city healthy, then we can start thinking about some luxury projects. Because the city's four hundred years old. Occasionally, it's going to need the new roof. And now's the time to invest in the bones of our city so that we can have, later on, we can do some of those nice things. So right now, I'm not for the scope of the maritime center as it sits.
Traffic enforcement. Last night, I was knocking doors on Post Allen Road and across the street, they were set up with radar. And I think it's been happening a little more often because we talk about C Street a lot. In regards to like Newton and Malvern, right where they are, you know, they could hide right in the gas station and pull people over. Because it does, they get going. It's a tough street. You can get going, you get going through the lights, you hit the lights at the right time to get out of shore and you can get going on that straightaway all the way down to the Willows. You slow down a little bit and you pick up again. So traffic enforcement, at least to the point where you can have people at least say, this is a prime spot. They used to do it for years up past Lady Good Council on the right at Bob O'Terres and then they stopped a little bit, but I think we can get back on that. In regards to the maritime center, I saw the artist rendition, and I don't know about anybody else, but the artist renditions that I've seen over the years on a lot of things don't end up being the artist renditions. It looks tall. They told me it was thirty feet. I thought a lot about it. We had a community meeting up at our Lady Good Council. And I would be looking more in regards to something that would be one or two stories, possibly a lower level. I'm in favor of them taking the maritime center that's there down and fixing it. That has been there a long time. It was Hurley's boat rental. It has mold in the cellar. The police force is in there. They need something that's a little bit better. I don't wanna see a marina bay or a regional approach. Diane Haller was nice enough to give me plenty of reports to read and I went through them trying to make sure that there wasn't any regional, wasn't anything in there that we weren't seeing. And I've had discussions with the mayor and I go right back and talk again. I think I wanna downsize that a little bit, but I'd like to have something nice for the folks at the end of Ward One in that area.
We had a similar question, but I had to address it a little bit more...
A little bit more detailed.
A little bit different.
The proposed regional maritime center in roadway Widing will take over by three homes by the Louise parking lot and dramatically increase truck traffic down C Street. This is proposed without any traffic report or intact study as required by any other similar project proposed in Quincy. Do you support... There's two questions again. Do you support the city buying Louise parking lot? And the second question, do you support the regional maritime center project as proposed? And would you let the neighbors have input into any future project in our community?
All right. I know I'm gonna miss one of those questions, John. Traffic study, the whole work should be done before we get into any widening the roads coming down or anything like that. And I know the sweet spots for the package store and areas where it gets tight as they're coming through there with anything that's large. In regards to Louise, I thought about this, I know a lot of people have thought about this, Louise needs the parking lot. You know, I would petition, I think, to the zoning board, if I get elected, to leave it alone, leave it as one parcel, leave the parking lot with Louise, let Louise have the parking lot. I know Louise wants to sell the parking lot, but I think they need it. In regards to if the city bought the parking lot, I don't think it comes into play as the end-all of solving all the problems with additional parking. The houses that you mentioned, John, in there, I know a few of them had spoken about it in favor. I think my coffee, who I know I grew up with down the end of the... I think my coffee, who I know I grew up with down, um, down the end of the neck, he was a little bit older, I think he's got one of the houses and he wants to stay, uh, I would relook the whole thing. Uh, again, I'm kinda Monday morning quarterback in it, I know I've talked to a lot of people in here, but, um, if the houses, if everybody agreed, I think it would be a good thing for them to clean up the parking lot and organize it. Right now, you've got trailers, you've got guys going out for days, going out longer than days, and we'd have a little organization. I think one of the things I said early on, if the Maritime Center, if we've ever got there, and it worked out that during the summer months, they put someone on from the parking wreck, a kid on from the parking wreck to kinda organize the parking lot down there with people coming in in the morning, put a kid to work, uh, a guzzi kid, probably a Ward One kid, uh, to kinda oversee the parking lot. So, uh, that's my look on things right now, but I would really have to sit down and look at everything over again, like I said, Diane was nice enough to give me a lot of literature. I know they wanna move the boat ramp also, possibly to the other side, which I'd be against on, on the other side of, of the, um, Maritime Center now. I think it'd be too congested with the Yacht Club, too close, and I know the Yacht Club guys, at least Mike Aitkins has spoken to me a little bit, they, they went too happy about that move, so there's a lot of moves there that have to be looked at. But in, at the end-all, I, I'd like to see Louis stay like it is, and I'd like to see something new, but nothing that turns into, you know, Marina Bay.
Would you let the neighbors have input into any future project in our community?
Of course, I don't know why they don't have it now, to tell you the truth. You know, um, one of the things that Joe had mentioned about having weekly meetings, I don't know if I could pull off weekly meetings, but...
Yes, you can, you can do it.
Yeah, but, um, we could have, we could have. But come down and talk to the people, I've been in enough of these meetings, these community meetings here where I know the audience here, I know they love the end of the neck, I know they love the way everything operates, I, that was my neighborhood down there. Uh, I grew up on a hill and I ran all over the place, and I know the landscape, and I know how people work back when Hobbies and Hurley's was hopping, and, and, and that was a traffic issue and a half, I'm glad we're not talking about that. But, um, but yeah, community should be involved in everything, they should be involved in, in all the comments, it shouldn't just be done and then say, hey, here's what we're doing, it shouldn't be. I, I, I couldn't sleep with myself if I started pulling that stuff.
What do you need to repeat?
Joe, you got a little extra going.
Yeah.
If you let him.
I mean, if you give the gist of it.
I got the gist.
Do you support the city buying Louis parking lot? And do you support the Regional Maritime Center project as proposed? And would you let the neighbors have input into any future project in our community?
Okay, so I've already spoken that I think the Maritime Project's too big, um, that remains true. Um, the Louis parking lot is, is House Neck's favorite controversy, and it, it is, it's been sketchy from the beginning, I don't, I, the, the, they keep changing stories, goalposts keep moving, I'm not really sure what to say here except that, no, I don't support buying the Louis parking lot, the zoning board in the nineties in their wisdom said these lots need to stay under common ownership. Whatever reason they had in the nineties is even more true today, okay? A restaurant should have the parking lot, it's, it's not a residential, I mean, I'm sorry, it's a residential area. If we, if you take away that parking lot, um, then you're gonna have people clogging up streets and getting in front of driveways, it's not gonna be good, and I don't understand why the city would be interested in buying the parking lot to turn around and tell the restaurant to keep using it. Uh, one more thing I'll say is, um, one thing, one reason we've been told that this could happen is the China decision from, uh, two thousand eleven, the China sued inland, or China's Restaurant in North Quincy for those who don't know. Um, and they were able to get their limitations on parking removed, and so Council of Forest feels that that could set precedent. Could set precedent for what we're dealing with now. The China situation was completely different than what we're talking about here, that is a commercial district, they have a thirty-two parking lot, they already had thirty-two existing parking lots, they were just trying to get out from needing forty, and they were making the argument that there's eight additional parts around the China. This is a completely different situation, where we're in a residential neighborhood with no parking for that business. So my opinion is the Louis should own their parking lot, like most restaurants, and, and we should not buy it. And I absolutely think neighbors should have input. Neighbors have had input on this decision, they've made it very clear they don't want it, but for some reason, nobody's listening, and we, we come out of these meetings, we say we don't want it, and then it's at the next city council meeting as, as, you know, part of the plan. So if I'm elected, um, your input will be valued.
At the last meeting that was held about the Louis parking lot, it was overwhelmingly decided by the neighbors that they were in favor of the city buying Louis parking lot. I was at that meeting, I know that. And I would also then like to know what you think about the city buying the parking lot at the Catholic Church? Cause that's one of the lots that the city is thinking of as well.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I, I, I think, uh, there's, there's, again, two different situations. If the Catholic Church, uh, wants to sell that lot, and it is their lot that pretty much is being used for city purposes almost exclusively except during Mass, if the Catholic Church wants to sell that lot and the city's interested, I'm less opposed to that because that's not property that we're paying, getting property taxes on now. So if you take the Louis lot, you take it off our tax rolls, that affects our, our property tax, our commercial tax right now. So I don't see them as parallel situations. Maritime Center? Well, uh, as I said earlier, I'm, I, I love the idea of the Maritime Center, I think one day it would be great to have a nice center like that, but I'll say this, I don't know why everyone thinks this isn't going to be a regional facility. It's a brand-new facility, it's gonna be way bigger with way more parking, it's gonna be free. Why wouldn't boaters come here to launch their boats? Why won't we see traffic going all the way up to Bernie's or further? And when, when I asked this at the community meeting at Our Lady of Good Council, Council of Forest's answer was, we're not expecting any more traffic, and I don't think that's the answer, so.
Go ahead, Mike. Yeah, I, just, just a little bit of history, first of all, the last, the last meeting, held in August, when everybody's on vacation.
Don't you remember, a lot of people, yeah, there were a lot of people here.
Well, my parents' neighbors were not in favor.
If I could just butt in, right, cause I, I went to the first couple of meetings, and I would read in the paper how much it was different than the actual meeting was. So a lot of people that were opposed to it have given up because they know what's going through, whether they like it or not, so.
And let me give you a little bit of history so that, so you understand, and I'm glad you said, David, that you were here during the Hobby Salt, I mean, the, uh, Saltwater Fishing Club, and the buses, I remember those days when you couldn't even get down here, right? And that's what you're looking at, you're not looking at anything different, that's what you're looking at, let me, let me just finish. Yeah. I served on the Nut Island Citizens Advisory Committee along with some other city leaders. And we did not allow the MWRA to do anything at Nut Island until there was a traffic study. And when the traffic study came back, it was impossible, impossible, to get any more traffic down here. Now that was ten years ago, before we had all these condos built and everything else. Now, it's even a worse situation than what it is. So no traffic study was done, yet we keep this ball going, have meetings, everybody's really happy, let's eliminate the park, the Louis, and, and that, and that park, but it was already spilled over, all right? So interestingly enough, when I looked at the filings with the state, no traffic study was given to them, no traffic report was given to them, and there's never been an impact study done in this community, never. First time, first project ever, and I've been involved for forty years, that never an impact study had been done, all right? The impact study would show that the traffic that is there, now also, I, I have aerial photographs, cause I have a drone, took aerial photographs of the last function that was there, when cars were parked, a fire truck come down and couldn't get down. I think John McCone actually has, uh, a photograph of another truck coming down, couldn't get down the street. And that's what you're looking at, you said more parking, it's not more parking, there's seventeen boat parking spaces there, all right? And then off-season, they change them into car parking spots, right? If you go down there on a Saturday night, Louis has his parking lot full and half of that other parking lot full, if not the whole parking lot. The Yacht Club hasn't even opened up their function room yet, all right? You're looking at a nightmare, now for somebody who doesn't have to go that far down, it's all right, you know, you don't have to go that far down. My parents lived there, and the ambulance cannot get down that street, cannot. This, it's, we're in a peninsula, it's an island, there's only one road in and one road out, and there's a wall there right at Louis. This project is going to create someone to get killed, absolutely.
Let me jump in for a sec, so, traffic, traffic study, right, number one. It, there's nothing, they haven't broken any ground here, we've seen artist renditions, I, I went through the reports a little bit, and I know that it's gonna be state-funded and I, and, and all this fun stuff that I have to go in and dig in a little bit, or Joe, you know, uh, whoever gets elected, to go in and dig a bit, a little bit about, you know, what's going on down there. But when, when I look at some of the things like Louis, John Gallagher right now, it, I, every time I get down to Louis, the place is packed. I mean, he's doing a good job, he's trying, you know, he's got these different things going on and he needs that parking lot, you know? So that's one thing, the other thing is, when I get down a little bit further, we even talked at all about Brill Field. Now Brill Field, I don't wanna get any open space taken away, but there's options down there off of Fensbrough to do something in regards to add some additional parking down there.
Just to interrupt you, I added twenty-eight parking spaces there, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight parking spaces, they're never used, they're never used because no one's gonna park all the way down at Brill Field and walk up to Louis, it's not going to happen.
No, but I'm just saying for, this is for the Maritime Center, if the Maritime Center was there, whatever, let's say something ended up being there besides the original Maritime Center we have now. That there'd be place to go, you know, to park your car after you, you'd be able to take your place, uh, your boat, trailer or whatever, to a different place if the, if the lot didn't have enough room in it, there wouldn't be any Louis involved. It would be someplace down at Brill, I look at the back of Brill Field, over where the Brills lived on Fensbrough, and there is a lot of wasted space out there that could be cleaned up and turned into a nice parking area and not hurting anything, now, you know, the ball field would be intact, they'd be parking if they had roller skating down there for that, um, for the roller rink, the hockey rink, I'm just looking at other options instead, instead of Louis parking lot.
Let me, let me give you a little more piece of history, and that's, I think, what's lost here. There's a lot of people who were involved in this stuff and they can't even, not around anymore. Um, I guess we'll, when, when Walter was selling his property, Peter Colson and I went to Walter and talked to him about the sale of that property. We went to the state, said you owe us, because of Nut Island, you owe us. We want you to buy this and give it to the city of Quincy for a buck, well, longest lease they could do is twenty-five years. That lease is gone, so I don't even know why it was talking, the city has no, uh, rights on that, on that property anymore. I don't even know what they're doing, the lease is all gone, all right, all right? The Secretary of Environmental Affairs joined us down there, we had an afternoon meeting, and we had a commitment from them, they would always remain as it is. It was always remained as it is, a simple boat ramp, no changes, et cetera. She recognized at the time that if it was expanded in any manner, shape, or form, that it would create more problems than it was worth. And the other commitment we had is that they would never take things off of Boston Harbor Islands and bring them through House Neck, cause that's what we were worried about. So those are the commitments, we're going back on those commitments, that was a commitment made to the community. We're going back on them, we're talking about tearing houses down and making a regional widening roads to get trucks in. I mean, you know widening roads to get trucks in and then they'll bring them down here. So I think the whole concept is seriously, what, my parents live across the street, property values here, I got a clue about it, there's no way to fix that traffic unless you take home.
I'll tell you, i- if I get elected on November seventh, I'm like, I'm gonna go back and look at every, the whole thing. Sit down with the mayor, sit down with the whole shebang and go through everything again. All those reports and, and look at everything about widening roads, and, and I'll be, you know, again, open with the community to talk about anything that comes out of there. Now, I'm gonna ask these guys face-to-face and hopefully they man up, and they're honest about their answers, but I'm gonna go back and address the whole thing down there because I wanna make sure it's right. I don't wanna clutter up the end of the neck, I don't wanna make traffic any worse. I don't know if it will get as worse, it get as bad as when Hobbies and Hurley's was there with the buses, but I, I know it'll get busier, I don't know if traffic will be backed up to Bernie's, but I'd like to go back and take a look at it. Sorry, Mike.
Let's change, uh, anybody got a question that's different? Yes?
Well, it's slightly different, but I wanna go back to the traffic issues, it's not just C Street, it's all of the streets in House Neck, I live on Manitav, someone drove down the street like over fifty miles an hour the other day. A simple solution might be to put up speed limit signs, there are no speed limit signs. Not that, I don't know if people would follow them, but at least if you saw that traffic, you know, the tra- the speed limit is thirty miles an hour or twenty-five miles an hour, it would let people understand that they're not on speedways, I mean, that's a simple...
We're talking about people who don't give a damn about speed limits.
Well, we, they're, they're doing that all the way.
On C Street, they've got thirty miles an hour signs.
All right, guys, let's, let's hear it from the candidates, all right?
Well, I think, I'm not sure. I, I agree completely, and I don't know why signage is so hard to do. It, it, I mean, I know we don't wanna clutter everything up, but there are some signs that are important and can save lives. If, uh, a brief, um, aside, I was, uh, I got to know the crossing guard at Manit and Darrow very well because I walk that way with my daughter every morning. And she said, hey, you're running for office, can you write me a letter and just get a sign for the school year? Cause people fly down Darrow as kids are walking to school, and she's constantly like trying to wave them down, she said, she thought, uh, uh, just a sign reminding them, school's in session and kids are here, would do wonders. And I wrote the letter for her, and I got a letter back saying we'll look into it. I don't understand, if the crossing guard is telling you, we need a sign, I don't even think this should be a discussion, this shouldn't be something that needs letters, the crossing guard says, a sign will help us here. Let's try it, what's wrong with trying, you know, we need to try more things here, we need to take some time out and go, okay, we have a problem here, let's start with this solution A. And if solution A doesn't work, we'll go to solution B, which maybe it'll be a speed bump, I know that's like a scary word. But there's gotta be something, because speed in House Neck is something I hear almost every time I door knock. People are saying, slow down, it's so funny, I hear it so much, I'm wondering who's speeding? Because I talked to all these people who are upset about the speeding, but I never get anyone saying, you know what, we just can't fly, we don't fast enough here. So, um, if, if elected, I, I would do things because, um, I was just driving down Edge Water today, checking out my signs, and some, some something back in my head told me, slow down, and a little kid in a tricycle went right in front of me. And I wasn't going fast, it wasn't that dramatic, but I remember thinking, you know, my kids don't look yet, they're, you know, three and seven, they'll fly right up to the, the seawall. And so, you know what, you're just gonna wind up waiting for that light at Quincy Shore Drive anyway, so just slow down.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, definitely in favor of, of the speed limit signs, but also one of the, I don't know if anybody, I know everybody likes to write, read the Riveting Quincy Sun in our profiles, but my profile that was put out a dick last week talked about addressing those type of issues right off the bat. I know we have big issues that are gonna take planning and time, but some of the things that I've seen around here, one of the things that jumps out at me as we're talking about speed is Palmer Street, where they had the accident, kids were going too fast, they lost control, got one got killed, uh, down there by Lester's, down by the, the Blue Store. And they've been asking for the crosswalk to be restripped and possibly illuminated, reflecting, uh, illuminating paint, that's not even done. So there's a lot of little things that I think I can take care of right off the bat. I have a good relationship with the DPW, a good relationship with the city with traffic and administration and parking, and I think I can get some of these things, Patty, off the ground in regards to parking, uh, speed limit signs rather, and crosswalks and some of the, some of the, the, the necessities we need that, that are helpful in slowing some of this traffic down if they're going along and all of a sudden they see reflection or they see something coming up, uh, you know, they have to slow down for. Put some things in place in some of the, some of the bad areas, Light C, look at Manit, Palmer Street, uh, you know, those are just a few.
Well, since we started talking about new and different things, uh, I've had this question, and actually it's something I posed, and it never happened. Uh, in two thousand nine, I went to Marco Island in Florida, and they have the most unique crosswalk system that I've ever seen in my life. It's, they use the big crosswalk signs, the big yellow things, and they actually have LEDs all around. And you step in between these things and the light goes on. And you step in between these things and the light goes on. Now, that wouldn't work around here with the snow and everything else and the snow removals, but they do, the ones that don't have those have buttons and you push it and the light goes on. And you could see that, but if you were four blocks away and it was a straightaway, you could see those. You can't miss them. I asked, I actually talked to Council Joe Finn about picking three or four spots around Quincy and trying to install them as a trial to see if they work up in New England because of the snow and stuff. And his suggestion was that I pick three locations in one one and I picked right in front of the hot brow. I picked right in front of IG and the last one was down at the corner of Winthrop, Rock Island Road and, um, C Street. And we put a proposal together, Myakans contacted the, actually took a picture of the manufacturer, we got ahold of manufacturer from Myakans and he got a price and everything else. And we, and Joe proposed it at the city council meetings and it referred to, um, committee and everything else and that was the end of it. I never really kept pushing it, uh, but I mean, since that proposal, people have been hit and killed in that, those crosswalks.
Did they ever get a cost?
Um, it was under ten thousand dollars. Oh, the part I forgot was that I also talked to one oh three, uh, and one oh three electricians were going to install the works as a donation and the one oh three members that live in the ward and the city would have, uh, put the breakaway poles in the front. So the question is, if I could put that together again, would you be in favor? And since that time, they're actually, if you go to Union Street, the rotary, the spaces and Route Three, the on and off ramp there has them there. Uh, it's a little different, but they installed, you know?
Yes, I would be in favor. I, I, for those three locations, the hot brow, the, the supermarket and Adam's Shore, uh, you know, I mean, three good locations for having a pilot or something like that because the traffic, uh, you know, the first two, uh, that's prime time for someone to be moving along at a good pace. And the corner here by the rectory, uh, coming around the bend here is also a blind spot as we all know sometimes where a cock could be coming faster than you think, so definitely, Mike, it's a good idea.
I love those kinds of ideas. Um, I, as some of you might know, I work at MIT as an administrator and I, so I have a huge respect for technology and innovation. And if we can come up with innovative ways like that, especially lets us lead. I was saying this at the, um, environmental debate the other night, is too often we, we wait for everyone else to have a good idea and follow along. So this would be a good opportunity for us to lead on some new innovative ways to deal with this type of problem. And, um, it's the, it's just the kind of solution that I think is going to, you know, improve quality of life in Quincy, so I would be totally for that.
Uh, anybody from the audience have a question? Follow, keep going. Yes?
That way I get that new session at Rockland and C Street and all that. Cut those edges down.
Fortunately, we don't own the edges.
For fiscal spending, what do you feel is an area where the city could cut back? Where do you think the city does not spend enough?
Well, I've seen a lot of spending in the last ten years. I'm always partial with, you know, anything that has to do with the schools, being on the school committee for twelve years. I think the mayor has been very good, uh, with the schools. We have a hundred million dollar budget, so, uh, but that's always a place where, um, you know, there's plenty of ideas coming out of the teachers, plenty of ideas out of the young teachers up there. Uh, we have, uh, Central and Quincy High, two, two beautiful schools that we can see how much new technology really benefits the kids and how old, how fast technology gets old. You know, uh, you know, I mean, you, you get it and two years later, you, you get it again. So that's, that's one place I think that they could always look at spending more. I think they do a, a nice job. I think they did a nice job with the fire department and with God's Foot Rescue One back on, uh, back on the rolls. They spent some smart money there. I see a lot of, um, and I know they have the money, I don't understand why it doesn't get done, but I think some of our parks down here, Brill Field, Chapel, uh, Park over by, um, Baby Wav, uh, over by the Dyke, i- is, is all overgrown, all beat up. I'm, I'm really kind of, uh, brings a tear to my eye to see that Brill Fields like that and isn't a ball field anymore, you know? It doesn't take much, along with Nancy, um, McConnell, the park that's up here off of Rockland. I, I just look at some of the parks, Le Breck, if you go take a look at Le Breck, the ball field, they let it go. They, they fix it and then they let it go for three or four years and it becomes a mess. So I'm kind of a big parking and wreck guy to make sure that gets done. The decrease, I'll jump in and do a little decrease in spending. I, I think some of the times, I think we gotta take a look at, um, one of the items is the amount of folks that we bring on in the city to do jobs. I look at, uh, the teachers sometimes and I put them number one, but I would do a complete review, which I'm, I'm gonna do if, if elected, to get in and look at the head counts just across the board on everything under the sun. Um, you know, I've only been out of the school committee for, um, almost two years now and, um, times change pretty quick and, and I'd have to get a good idea on some of the things that have out there because some of the places, I think some of the departments look like they might have too many items, too many people, too many cars, uh, but maybe I'm wrong and I have to go in and do my homework. So I take a hard look at, at some of the capital spending and make sure we're not going overboard with capital spending across the city.
I'll save you the time, we're going overboard with some of the capital spending. As I said earlier, um, the, the vanity luxurious projects, um, are tempting and it's nice to have the idea of these beautiful green spaces outside City Hall and, you know, a Maritime Center and stuff like that and now our new animal shelter slash dog park that's coming. These are all wonderful concepts, but as I said before, we have a four-hundred-year-old city that's falling apart and so I would spend less on these beautiful projects for now and get our, the bones of our city rehabilitated. We're seeing ponding on the roads, we're seeing sinkholes. We had three sinkholes last year. That's because our sewer mains are leaking and they're, they're messing up the soil and the, and the road falls. Not only that, but when we have these sewer mains that are leaking like this, we're paying to have, uh, seawater and stormwater processed because it gets into those sewer lines and goes out for processing. So we're paying for water that we're, you know, isn't part of our source system, we're paying to have that processed. So these are things that we need to shore up first and then, you know, have the, the nice projects.
Any other questions? We got a few more here, man.
Okay, trash.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a trash problem. Now, I'm reading as I didn't make this joke, so. We have a trash problem in Quincy. Sorry, many trash problems. I've read complaints about trash dumped on the street and blown all over our streets and yards. I've heard stories of trash not being picked up until six to seven P M. I have heard others, from others, that recycling yard waste getting dumped in the general trash. This is costing more money to dump it. It hasn't proved during this election season. So there are two questions here. How do we get the service that was contracted for and how do we get oversight for all of Quincy's contracts, even after the election season? Second fact, Quincy needs to increase its recycling. Do you have any ideas for increasing recycling and lowering waste costs?
We learned the other night that Quincy has a fifteen percent recycling rate and we learned that at the Q can debate. And I think everyone on the, the stage was pretty shocked by that. One of the reasons we have a bad recycling rate is we have, um, a trash company that's throwing recycling in with the trash. We've all seen it, I mean, I've seen it, I, I think most of you have seen it from time to time. So what's been happening lately is, um, DPW's been tailing some of these trucks to make sure that they're doing their jobs correctly. And I, I agree, I don't think it's a coincidence that, um, we're having enforcement during the election cycle. So what I would wanna do is I would, would wanna set up, um, some sort of instant feedback that people could either call hotline like they do for snow removal or use an app or, or, or social media to let people know when they're seeing abuses by a sunrise or whoever's doing the trash, so that DPW can get right on it. And, and we, and we need to obviously have a, another bidding system when this contract is up and find a company who's going to do the job that we're paying them to do. Um, the recycling rate, my idea for the recycling rate, uh, as I said at Q can the other night, is awareness. And I think just as, uh, your city council is, is happy to knock on your doors during election cycle to say, "Please vote for me," we need to get out into the communities and explain the benefits of recycling. I know it's a little weird in two thousand seventeen to have to explain it, but it does save us money because we're not paying to have it, uh, treated as trash and it does help the environment. So we have increased awareness and, and we can look at those pilot programs with the recycling buckets so that you have less room for trash and more room for recycling, but the bottom line is people have to understand that it's costing their tax dollars when they throw something out that can be recycled and we can do that through awareness.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, I'll, I'll answer the first, uh, I'll flip it a little bit and talk about the awareness part that Joe just mentioned. When we were, uh, at the Q can the other night, they asked us which departments didn't wanna get involved in the city. And I know the schools, there's a lot of recycling, I know that, uh, education, I know DPW with John Sullivan does a tremendous amount. Dan Ramadi, who's in the back of the room, uh, did a tremendous job, uh, working with, uh, the people at the DPW, people in the administration and the schools to promote it more. I think the community is the toughest part, to get the word, how do you get it to, you know, Jane and Joe Smith, the, the homeowner, who, who isn't involved really within the city, um, city actions, they're just out doing their own thing and putting it out. How do you get it to them? Is it newsletters? Is it Q A T V? We have a lot of assets in the city to utilize on that. In regards to Sa, um, I was gonna call him Savage, uh, Sunrise Scavenger, uh, I went out knocking doors in Adam's Shore, I was out at seven o'clock at night in, in the summertime and they, they came by and then last night, Post Island Road in the fog, uh, you know, who comes rolling by at six thirty, but, but those guys too. And I'm, and I asked a few of the neighbors and they said, "Yeah, they, you know, they're pretty messy with everything going on." And for, for things to sit out, if you put your traffic out, uh, trash out the night before and it doesn't get picked up, you know, it's, it's almost out there twenty-four hours. And the other night, we talked a little bit about compost and, you know, going back to another recycling bin where you'd put food out. Imagine if that was happening with these guys. So, uh, that's on my radar from the get-go is to check out, uh, the whole routine with sunrise and take a look. It's gotta be that they say they have so many trucks in the city and they're cutting it in half trying to, trying to save money because they're not covering it. They should be picking up trash at eight o'clock, seven o'clock at night regardless of what, what time of the year it is.
I have a question. This is very foolish and I invited them somebody and I apologize ahead of time. What I don't understand is if we as a city are getting reimbursed for our recycling, why cannot we stop the people who are going into our recycling bins every single day of every single week in every different neighborhood and picking out those recyclables and making a living out of it or doing whatever they're doing and all we get, what we complain about is, "I'm sorry, that's city property, we can't stop them if our pockets not..."
I have an answer for that. They're looking for the nickel deposit bars.
I know why they're doing it.
If you separate them and call the Boy Scouts, they'll come and pick them up. Daniel, do you want the answer?
No, but just to, just to go back, I, I, I think I'm down my, you know, I'm, I'm a morning guy with the trash. I don't like putting it out at night because somehow or another, somebody knocks it over or something. So, you know, I'm dragging it out, you know, probably five minutes as I, as I hear the truck coming around the corner, one of those guys. But, um, um, yeah, I don't understand why, I mean, how many of these folks that do it? I mean, it, it, Mike makes a great point if the Boy Scouts ended up with it, but it'd be very hard, I'm just thinking aloud here, for us to keep an eye or have, you know, how, what would be the, the, the check and balance on the guy coming in?
I just thought we're getting reimbursed for our recyclables and here we're missing an opportunity for our reimbursement, so I'm just...
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a good point. I, I don't have an answer for you, but I, it's, it's a good point because it happens all over the place and they probably, I don't know if they do alright, but they probably do okay, you know?
Go ahead. Yeah, uh, related to the trash issue, um, though not for individuals, why don't we have, at least in Howes Neck, I'm sure in the rest of Ward One as well, but why don't we have trash receptacles in the area, like at Le Breck Park or at the sea wall or at the beginning at the, at both ends of the, uh, of the dyke trail, you know? I mean, we, we have this, there's a real problem with litter around here and it's because people just don't have a place to put the stuff. Once they finish drinking something, they throw it away because they don't have a place to put it. There's no, I, it's the only neighborhood I've seen where there's been, there's one trash receptacle, it's right outside of the Cardinal Park. That's it. I mean, seriously? I mean, it's a simple thing. It, it shouldn't cost the city a lot of money to put a few, you know, those, what they call them, those big bally things, you know, so that they can't be broken into. Yeah, really.
And, uh, I, I would be interested in trying out some of those solar compactor ones too. We have them all over. Oh, yeah, well, then, I agree with you there. That's the name, okay. Yeah, I, I think that'd be great. I would like to see them, um, more frequently throughout the neighborhood.
We have one of those, um, big bally things next to the ice cream shop, between the ice cream shop and the Kellin Park. And in fact, I mean, it reeks, it absolutely reeks and it doesn't matter if there's a trash in there, there's still trash in the Kellin Park and the garker's come along if you get up there. So there's a trash.
No, and, and, and what's, you know, I mean, you get back to it and, you know, you know, you, which we should do because it's our job to pursue the city to empty those barrels and clean those barrels so they don't reek. I was on a run up at Broad Meadows, a fundraiser, I walked, I didn't run, but, uh, uh, but on the dyke up, on the dyke, on some of the entrances to the dyke, probably behind your house if you're on C Street where I saw you heading tonight. Uh, but, you know, the entrances to the dyke, you know, uh, right there at Rockland and then also further up by Broad Meadows, it would be a good idea because you hate to say it, people pull over there and they don't go too far into the woods right there at the beginning and they dump, and it could be dunked in donuts cups, it could be something minor, it could be something major, but, but it's a good idea to try to protect, you know, some of our, uh, what we'll call it, our trails that we have here, which is the dyke, you know, and, uh, you know, which is nice to walk on and you hate to see everything down the sides of it, uh, cluttered with, with stuff, so it's a good idea.
Go ahead. I have a question. We've been talking a lot about traffic and it is a very big issue here in, not only in Ward One, but in Quincy. But another big issue that's going to be bigger as we get more, um, multi-family housing in center of the city is the T. Have you written it lately? Do I have to rush out? I do it every day. And I wanna know what, what you are going to do with your, with the councils as, at large to help pressure the MBTA to refuck their service?
Well, this has been a major theme of my campaign. I ride the T every day myself, uh, Monday through Friday, I get on at North Quincy and I ride into Kendall Square. And so, um, if you follow my Twitter page, uh, I've been complaining about the MBTA almost on a daily basis and I do think that the city has kind of threw up their hands and surrendered and is not doing enough to stand up for it, it, its daily citizens, uh, who are commuting into Boston or Cambridge, um, or on the commuter rail even. So what I would say is, um, I have been lobbying Senator Keenan to get on his citizens advisory board, um, I've been writing to him, I've been, I really wanna place that table because I feel that, um, I will stand up for, uh, Quincy's commuters better than anyone else running for office right now because I, I, I mean, I'm in living that war. And now that they're doing all four Quincy stations, they're refurbishing all at the same time. Who let this happen, you know? So, the problem with that is, they're selling the North Quincy lot, which is, I mean, the T is selling it. It's 1,200 spaces. They've promised 120 spots to be available during construction. That's 1,000 spaces that are gone. That lot is full, Monday through Friday, by 9:30 a.m. So, there's one nightmare coming down our way. The Wallaston T is getting shut down for 20 months sometime, whenever they keep moving the project back. The Quincy Center's bus shelter is getting worked on, Quincy Adams also getting worked on. It's going to be a nightmare, and what we've been hearing from our local and state government is, "It's gonna be tough, hang in there." Well, that's not good enough. We have trains not coming for five years, okay? It's going, when it's all said and done, are we gonna have a world-class public transportation system? I hope so. But, I mean, I really do hope, I hope. But, in the next five years, we are going to have quality of life sink. And so, I think it's incumbent, every city councillor should be railing for the MBTA to treat Quincy citizens with respect. They treat Boston citizens with respect, they treat Cambridge citizens with respect. The South Shore, they've made a mess. I invite you to go to my blog, where I have about 1,500 words written on this.
With all the T stations under construction, there is kind of a calamity here that we're gonna go through. My hope is that the, I know that they're gonna be moving the buses out of Quincy Square, the theme is to go down to Quincy Adams, when things are done, to remove some of the congestion that's up in Quincy Square. I think there's always gonna be congestion in Quincy Square. We all tend to forget, when we grew up, or some of us grew up, that we had one or two cars, and now we have three or four cars, and they're all out and about, and the roads are pretty much the same in Quincy. The T station in Quincy, I sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the mayor for the downtown, I sat on it during the failing administration, I came back on it with the Koch administration, because I'm up that end of the ward. I look at the T station, I hope that the design, too, in regards to the T station, alleviates a lot of the issues we have at some of the T stations, especially Quincy. And I hope that, when they're done, they turn that into a user-friendly commuter T station, and an unfriendly place for those who aren't supposed to be up there, because that's another chaotic scene up there, regardless of the traffic that's going on, you've got all that chaos going on. But, for those guys to go after the T stations, all four at once, as Joe mentioned, the reduction in parking at Wallaston and North Quincy, I don't think anybody has an answer where the cars are gonna go. Now, people are just probably gonna, they hope they're probably just gonna give up, get a ride up to the T, no parking, and get picked up at the T, or take the bus. That's probably what they're hoping, because there's no place around North Quincy for 1,000 cars to go to. There's no place around Wallaston. I mean, all the land is gone, there's no empty lot we can utilize. Down at Quincy Adams, there is a big lot behind it, the Home Depot, there's options down there, if they had issues with the garage, they could put cars outside. That's the only one out of all four that has any type of option, so I'm dying to see what happens myself.
We need people who ride the T to be on these advisory boards, too.
We're gonna do one or two more questions, and then give you a few minutes to make your pitch.
The sober house, the proposed sober house ordinance? At a time of high increases of substance abuse, the need to help people who went to recovery for drugs and alcohol, and the need for recovery systems has increased, the need for the final step before returning to our families and neighborhoods is a sober house. How do you feel about the sober house use, and do you agree with or disagree with just with the proposed sober house ordinance?
John, the recent one? The one that just went through the ordinance with Quincy?
Yeah.
I, you know, nobody wants it in their backyard. All of a sudden, the sober house shows up, and it's in there, there's no warning, and it's in Phil Burke's neighborhood, it's in John McConaughey's, it's in there. So that phrase, "Nimby, not in my backyard," always comes up. I agree there's gotta be check and balances, but there's some good points about other groups that come in, and I have a situation on my street right now, where a neighbor bought a house, and has rented the house out to eight kids that play on the Curry lacrosse team. I got a worse problem than sober house in my neighborhood. Now, you look at it, and you say to yourself, shouldn't there be checks and balances on those kids, too? Because they come in, there were 300 kids on my street the other night. 300 that were on my street. So, I look back and look at what they did, and I know that, I think Senator Keenan was a little apprehensive about it, Jim Timmons was apprehensive about it, if you were, you know, getting too far into it, but I think people need, I agree with it, I think people need a warning system, a little bit of a warning system, that the sober house is gonna be in the up and up, it's gonna be well-kept, it's gonna be what they're saying, it's gonna be the people that are in the house, other people that are supposed to be in the house. But I look at the example, it's funny, not that funny, but on my street, and this guy just rented out blind, he's in the, he's in the process right now of going through, a process of moving these guys along to their next place, because they just won't stop, and, you know, they've, I think, violated some ordinances about having so many bodies type of thing in the neighborhood. I'm not sure on the ins and outs of that, but I think you should be notified that you're gonna get it, and so the community is on the up and up, on what's coming into your neighborhood. One popped up on Greenleaf Street, at the corner of Putnam, Edgmere, and Greenleaf, which is close to my house, and the folks had a few meetings with the present councillor, and some city officials, and it was, it wasn't expressed as clearly as they would have liked, and all of a sudden, it was on top of them. So, I think there should be some type of, you know, warning, that you're gonna get it in your neighborhood, and then folks can talk about it.
I agree with a lot of that. I think there should be communication. I think the sober houses, for their own sake, and for the sake of their residents, should run a really nice community. I think they should be great neighbors. I think their properties should be immaculate, and they should be respectful of the street they're living in, because it's important, you know, if we're going to be serious about opioid addiction and solving that problem, they're gonna be a big part of the solution. You need these houses, because if you send people off to institutional living, a subculture begins to happen. And I learned a lot about this through my family, who works in this, back in Pennsylvania. And it's important that they be part of the community as they recover, so that when they're back on the road to recovery, they can integrate back into society without struggle. And so, I'm all for them being good neighbors, and having a thriving presence in our neighborhood, because they're an important part of the recovery process. That being said, the city councillors should not be surprised to see one pop up. City councillors should know ahead of time, they should be out there, again, canvassing the community, letting people know what's coming. And then, they should be on the front step of that house when it opens with a plate of cookies, introducing themselves, saying, "I'm your city councillor, and this is what we expect from our community neighbors." And if we have a community effect in place, then I think they will act like good neighbors.
For the audience, anyway, my own question. And the first part of my question is rhetorical, okay? I don't want to put anybody on the spot. But, is a halfway house in Quincy, it's been almost 50 years of social recovery, you know, I'd check anybody in the drone to tell me where that's located. There was also, you know, I think most people don't even know it's there, that's my point. There's also a sober house off of Wallaston Beach, very good neighbors to people, there's up on Arlington Street in North Quincy. I can name it, and even not part of chain, or the one on Arlington Street might be, but these other ones are not. You know, and they run well, they're run, and people are screened well, and all that. Now, on the other hand, we have rooming houses, particularly up around, up in the area of the Y, up in Quincy Center and all that, and then, you know, there's not a lot you can do about Father Bill's, but if you look at the sex offender registry, if they're not in Father Bill's, they're usually one of those rooming houses down there. Anybody saying they're in our neighborhood, unannounced, you don't know they're saying a word, I would be more concerned about the guy sitting on a rooming house on Spass Street or wherever he is, than the person trying to make their life, sitting in a recovery home. So, you know, I'd be quite willing to respond to that.
Well, I think that goes back to my point when I was, you know, really telling that true story about the guys that are on my street now. You know, I mean, they're at different situations. Sex offenders should be identified immediately. I mean, I mean, you know, I know where you're talking, and what areas they're in. Up in the Spass Street, the Francis Street area, I, you know, but that's why I think the other night, when they got into that conversation about this ordinance, they were looking at, I think trying to say, it might end up being more de-broadening. So, say, if you're gonna try to, you know, just zero in on these guys, that probably they're gonna be fine, you know? The Greenleaf House, at Edgmere and Greenleaf, is in great shape, it's a beautiful house, and as you said, John, about that recovery house, you wouldn't even know it, you know? You wouldn't even know it. So, I would be more concerned with what you're talking about right now than the folks at the sober house, as long as, you know, the place is well-kept, they go by the rules, they understand what's happening, you know, and it doesn't turn into a horror show, that, you know, that we're on top of it right from the beginning, and as councillors, we should be on top of it, and I think that's what they're looking for, just to get some notification. But maybe not just sober houses, maybe it's gonna get bigger. Yeah, it's gonna get bigger to what you're talking about.
It's gonna be more broad.
Right. And I think it probably will, but that's what Jim Timmons and Senator Keenan were leaning to that night, saying, "You can't pick on that gang." And, you know, in regards to Father Bill's, I know we talked a little bit about Father Bill's, and they might relocate, whatever, but that's another group you have to take care of. I know they're in a tough position down there, where they were put in, and they don't have any training, they need a new facility. They're all jammed into that old registry down there, they need a new facility and a new location. And I, when I was down there earlier in the year, in regards to that, to those guys at Father Bill's, with the management down there, right away, they said, you know, maybe Braintree, Wayman, Quincy, a regional approach, you know, put it where it's advantageous to the folks at Father Bill's, they have a bus line, and also build it so they have some training facilities, and they're not just bunk beds and have something to eat and help the front door. So, it all matters. I agree.
We actually said 8:30, if you guys don't mind staying, and maybe just answering, we're not gonna ask any more questions.
Spirit of the audience out here.
If you don't mind. So, Mike?
Yeah.
Don't make a lot, though, like a lot.
I won't.
Don't make, you know, Mike's changing, is he gonna ask another question?
And it relates to Louis Park and Lot. We got wrapped up in it, so I didn't get a chance to clear it. On one side of Louis Park and Lot is Residence A. Behind Louis Park and Lot is Residence A. It abuts its natural boundary by a street. Therefore, the zoning would not be spot zoning if it was rezoned to Residence A. If it was rezoned to Residence A, the non-conforming rights of the owner would stay in perpetuity until the use was changed. But that neighborhood would not have to worry about a four-story condo building if it was owned to Residence A. And as I said, they would continue to use it in non-conforming use, but it also takes away the threat of gonna put a four-story building there. But the only reason that lot is zoned, business being, is because of the business, that's all. So it doesn't hurt the business at all, but it would give the neighborhood a great deal of comfort, knowing that it was Residence A, and if anything ever happened, it could only be single-family homes in there. So my question is, is that if you get elected, would you be willing to change the zoning to Residence A?
Yes.
Yes, I would, too, also, Mike. I would look, and again, I'm gonna look at the whole situation down there, in regards to everything that was brought up at a few community meetings early on, and yes, I would entertain that.
Before the next one, Thursday at Quincy High School, the City Democratic Committee is holding candidates night, all the candidates, the school committee, council at Lodge, and against the White House, council in three floors, you guys are gonna be together. So, that's at 6:45, and it's until 8:40, about the beginning.
Thank you.
One last question, yeah. Anybody else have any questions? One, yeah, this is the last question.
Something that I've noticed is, at least in Housneck and I'm sure in other areas of Ward One, there are a number of foreclosed properties. And my, the thing that bothers me is not so much that they're foreclosed, it's just the fact that the people who own them, i.e. the banks, are not maintaining these properties, so they rot, and they end up destroying and looking, and ruin messing up the rest of the neighborhood. 970 C Street managed to finally get an investor, but that place looked like hell for the longest time. Some guy who's right next door to them, he's doing the best he can to make his new place look great, he's got the flowers and everything, and theirs is destroyed. And, you know, 713, Stokes, the same thing. You know, you've got these places that are just, you know, going to hell in a handbasket. And who's gonna get the banks to maintain these properties? That's all it is. Yeah, they're mowed lawn, you know, that's, you know, we know that these are, you know, and because they're really affecting the value of the properties.
We have blight laws for a reason, and we should start enforcing them, because, and it'll pay for itself, because you will have increased property taxes, because that street will be full of higher-assessed properties without a property that's in blight right next door to it. So, we should be, you know, enforcing these things. There's a few departments in the city that are deemed to be too thinly staffed, I think we should be enforcing blight. We haven't had a conservation agent in Quincy since 2010. I don't know why, we just stopped having one. You know, so when people are messing up properties, or dumping something where they shouldn't, we have nobody who enforces that, and it's been seven years now. So, we need to take care of those types of problems, and we will, it'll self-fund, because of the, you know, the assessed properties will go up, and it'll be a better quality of life for people on those streets.
All right, with that, we're gonna have a closing. You guys make your final pitches.
We need to get rid of those houses.
Do you want me to go?
Yeah, you choose to say.
Thanks for coming.
First of all, thank you, thank Mike Berry, thank the committee, Ward One, they're very active down here, and we knew it was, it was gonna be a good night, and well-attended. So thanks for coming in, and thanks for the questions. I think they were all good questions, they all have to do with Ward One issues. Again, my name's Dave McCarthy, and I'm running for this council seat, after being on the school committee for 12 years. I served from 2004 to 2015 on the Quincy School Committee. I'm a former park and rec board member. I currently sit on the mayor's Citizens Action Committee for the downtown. I got selected because I live in that part of the ward, up near the downtown, and it's been very beneficial in regards to having input about the T station, about traffic, and different things, and I enjoy it. I also sit on the Quincy College Board of Governors, I sit on the Board of Directors for social and mental health, and I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Carroll Center for the blind. I like community service, I like being involved and helping people. My wife and I are married for 32 years, she grew up at Quincy Point, I grew up in Housneck, up on the hill, and we have eight wonderful children that have gone through the Quincy Public School System in Marymount, Broad Meadows, and Quincy High. So we're vested in Quincy. We came back this way. When we first got married, we lived with my in-laws in Abington for a brief time, which was a lot of fun, and then we moved back to Braintree, and we kept coming home, and we wanted to come home. When I didn't make out as council at Lodge a year and a half ago, I still knew I had plenty of gas in the tank, and I wanted to run- plenty gas in the tank, and I wanted to run again and get involved and help the city. Ward One has always had a soft spot with me. My kids give me a hard time because I have to drive down here a lot and tell them where everybody lived, and the house names don't change, whoever lived here in the 60s and the 70s, that's the name of the house, even if you folks are in those houses right now. So, Ward One came up, and I felt it was a good time for me to run. I run hot all summer, I think I'm able to work with the administration in a positive way, work proactively with the councillors to get things done, and I think I can represent Ward One in a very, very good fashion. So, I humbly ask for your vote on November 7th. I enjoy it, I'm proactive, I'll be out there and visible, you'll see me a lot. I enjoy it and would love your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Hi, as you all know, my name's Joe Murphy, and I'm a political newcomer here. This is my first campaign. I've lived in Quincy since 2007, I've lived in Hausneck since 2012. My wife and I knew we wanted to live in Hausneck almost immediately upon coming back to the Boston area, and it took a little while, but we finally did it in 2012. So, Hausneck is important to us, and I've gotten to know all of Ward One through this campaign, and it's just the nicest, funny people I've, you know, encountered. I really have enjoyed getting to know all of you. I think the reason why I'm the right choice is, I'm a fresh choice. I've gotten to know Dave a lot, he's, I consider him a friend now, I really like him, but Dave has been doing this a long time, and he's part of what I call Quincy's political clique. He was in the school committee for a long time, and he ran for at-large last time, and he's running for Ward One now. So, he knows a lot of people, and he knows a lot about the government, but we need new ideas and new, fresh perspectives. So, what I wanna do if I win is, I wanna attract new small businesses to Quincy that provide a greater range of amenities. I think we have a lot of the same amenities here, if we have one more Dunkin' Donuts, there might be some type of explosion, but for instance, the Wild Willy's Burgers on Washington Street, for instance, is now going to become a new Dunkin' Donuts between two other Dunkin' Donuts. And so, we need new things. I've been advocating for maker spaces and science concerns, we have no theater in Quincy, we lost our hospital, somehow, we're the largest city in Massachusetts without a hospital now. No one's born in Quincy anymore unless it's an accident, you know? These are disappointing to me. So, I'm for, you know, revitalizing not just our architecture and our pathways around Quincy Center, but bringing in new and varied businesses so we can, like, have fun in Quincy, a mini golf course, a theater, it won't kill us. I'm also, as you heard earlier, a huge advocate for MBTA commuters, and that's gonna be a big part of what I do in office. As I also said earlier, I'm trying to, I'm very against overdevelopment as far as dumb development, I'm for smart development where they belong and not in settled neighborhoods where single-family homes would be insulted. As I also said earlier, I think we should be spending more on infrastructure, less on vanity projects, and I'm all for constituent communication, whether it's in your living room, at a coffee hour, or online, and I would love your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
All right.